Please let us know when your request is announced. Minutes for the meeting are being recorded, therefore, anyone wishing to conduct business will be asked to come to the microphone, provide their name, address, present their requests or concerns and questions. For the planning commission, groups are requested to select a spokesperson to express the group's concerns, because each side will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Plats, rezoning, revised master plans, street renaming's require a public hearing, after which the planning commission will deliberate and render its decision. Development plans require a public hearing to provide the public an opportunity to express opinions, however, a vote by the planning commission shall not be taken. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's requests are required to recuse themselves. If a motion to deny a request is made, a reason must be given. Members of the planning commission present are Frank Cook, Reggie Dunn, Buddy Hardwick, Cruz Reeves, James Reed. Members of the staff will be Warren Adams, Tanya Ingram, Robert Smith, Carol Ann Pinkston. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 26th meeting?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
On the minutes, on four and six.
Yes, Mike, madam.
I wasn't here at the meeting, but on...
I can't hear you.
Am I on mic? Alright. On number four, it's a typo, I'm sure. Lucas, the L's missing off of Lucas Drive. And on six, it shows Mr. Reed making the motion and the second for that. Adam.
Okay. I'll fix those. Got it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there are no changes to the agenda, so we'll start with item one. Valvoline LLC, public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at 6985 Atlanta Highway in a B2 district.
Hello, my name is Garrett Small. I'm the civil engineer for this project representing Valvoline. We are proposing a two-bay building in the area of B2, which is commercial zoning. This is a standard drive-in, you stay in your car, oil change facility for minor repairs, preventative maintenance. There's stacking for three cars on this. It'll be demoing or taking the existing area where it's currently a bank now, not changing any ingress or egress, and utilizing existing surfaces that are there now.
Are there any questions from the planning commission?
Yes, will there, uh, right here. Will there only be nine parking spaces?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be sufficient?
Yes. The, um, the people going in for oil change, they stay in their car unless they ask to get out, but otherwise, the only people they need is standard three spaces per bay for a total, so with two bays, there should only be six spaces used, so there's more than enough parking.
Any further questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? A public hearing's been held. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, Carsten Morris, representing Mavis Tires and Brakes. A public hearing for a development plan for a building to be located at 50 Mitchell Avenue in a B2 district.
Nobody here to represent?
No, but you can still ask if anybody's here, 'cause...
Does anybody have any questions for this? Anybody present for this one? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jackie Partridge, and as a citizen, I know this is zoned for this building, and they have the right to build it, but we are in the neighborhood or against this. There are eight turnout places within a three-mile radius of 50 Mitchell Drive. Just think that's a little bit much to add another one. Also, Mavis in the best top 10 tire stores, Mavis ranks number 10. They do not have a very good rating with Better Business Bureau, and I would like you to consider not allowing this to be in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are we supposed to address if we have a comment? I mean, where nobody comes and represents this? Because I know the people in the townhouses adjacent to this would like some kind of buffer there, some large shrubs or trees or something. I'd like to address somebody.
Yeah, it's been determined that the development plan meets all of our requirements, which is why this is only a public hearing to take public comment, but it actually meets all of our requirements, so, um...
I know, but previously, when, when something comes up like this and, and they agree to it, you know, they do it. Be mighty nice if they'd be here.
Yeah, unfortunately, you can't take any action on it, so, you know, you can't delay it. This is purely to hear, to hear public comment.
Warren, I can't, I can't understand what you're saying. I really can't.
You can't take any action on it, therefore, you can't delay it, and the, the plan meets all of the requirements for development plans, so unfortunately, this is, um, this is only to hear public comments.
I think that should be communicated to that young lady that was up, up to the mic, that, uh, you know, where we are at this point, I think that should be made clear to her, so that she can, uh, get other people or come back to the, the development plan. The next step, so they could, uh, you know, whether it's gonna be a buffer or whatever the case may be.
What is the next step? Build it? I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's...
The next step is just to build it.
Go ahead, Warren. Go ahead, Warren.
Yes, they would submit their construction applications, but the actual development plan itself, and, and this is the, you know, the, the situation we're in, if it meets all of our requirements, which it does, then this hearing is purely to hear public comment, but you cannot take any action, which I believe means you cannot delay it either.
But I will say this, at the same time, over here, Cruz, to your, to your right, to your right. Yeah, so, so we, we can carry that comment and request back to the developer, but again, the, the developer is not required to adhere to it, but, um, we can, we can definitely carry that back.
I know previously, when they're here, they'll, most often say, "We'll do that."
Yes, sir.
And, and then that's in the, in the minutes, and they do it.
Yes, sir. We'll definitely note it and, um, um, inform them that, that the planning commission had that request for a, a buffer, um, on the backside of the property between the business and the residential.
Anything further?
And just, just for the citizen right here that, that made the, the comments, th- this is only a public hearing, um, yes, ma'am.
She needs to come up to the mic, we can't hear her.
Ma'am?
Ye- yes, ma'am, I, I understand.
Robert, she needs to come up to the mic, we can't hear anything.
Yeah, I understand.
I know.
If you will, come to the microphone, ma'am, I'm sorry. But I, I just wanted to convey to her, because I think that's what y'all said, somebody needs to let the citizen know, and, I mean, and, but she's...
I understand that it meets all the zoning requirements, and we would love to have something there, but not a tire store. Like I said, there are eight within a three-mile radius, that's a little much, and we would love to have something there more fitting for the neighborhood. I don't know what that is, maybe a nice restaurant, but not a tire store that's open seven days a week, 365, just about a year. And plus the, I know everybody says traffic and everything, but we would just like to see something better there for our community than a tire store. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Public hearing's been held.
I'm pre Kelly Jamison, representing Chipotle Mexican Restaurant. A public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at 2682 Easton Boulevard in a B3 district.
Is there anybody present for this item? A public hearing's been held.
Robert, I have a question. If we keep going through these public hearings, and then the people that's presenting them aren't here, then what good is the public hearing? Because we don't know what their, their side is, the public don't know what their side is, uh, the public can't, we can't explain it to the public, the public don't know, so there, there's nothing we could do about that? No.
One, one thing I would say is the, um, the proposed new zoning, um, ordinance does tighten up a lot of things, like UCs and landscaping and fences and buffers, so the hope is that when the, when the new zoning code is actually adopted, there will be a lot more things...
I'm sorry, we can't under- I can't understand you.
Oh, it's, it, Warren is actually talking, not me. He said, he, he said he couldn't understand you. Say that and repeat that again, Warren.
We are working on the new zoning code at the moment, we have module two to review, and that does include a lot of new design requirements regarding landscaping, fences, walls, buffers, so certainly a lot of that will have to be reviewed in development plans when they come in in the future. So it doesn't actually help your situation reviewing development plans, but it certainly gives us a lot more of these things to, to require when we get these, these new development plans in. So it doesn't help you at the moment, but hopefully, once the new code is adopted, um, there will, there will be a lot more requirements for these sort of things.
What kind of timeframe is this?
Yeah, I, I understand that, but sometime in these public hearings, they could, uh, you know, the citizens can say, "Look, we, we would like to have, uh, for example, a buffer," but if the, if the presenter is not here, and there's no one here presenting that, that, uh, that project, then it's, it's, it's like that thumb in the nose up there, you know, and it just goes through.
We, we can certainly pass the comments on, but there's no requirement for the developer to actually follow up on them.
We can't require the developer to be here.
I, I think what he's saying, Warren, is, is because there's nobody here, can we require them to be here?
Can we require them to be here?
To present and a, answer questions that people may have. I'll put it off to next month, delay it.
Well, you can't, because you can't take any action on it.
I mean, you guys delay it, right? If the person is not here, then you guys delay it. You can't do that either? I know, we can, but you can't.
I have a question for Tanya.
For me?
Is your office telling these people they don't have to be here?
No, sir, matter of fact, it's quite the opposite. We send a reminder letter saying you or a representative should be here.
Should means they have to be here?
We can certainly...
What does should mean?
We can certainly check with legal, if we can see you must be here for the review to, or the, the, the public hearing to proceed. So I can certainly reach out to the legal department and see exactly if we can make that effectively a condition of bringing one forward, that someone must be here. If you would like me to do that, I can certainly do that.
Yes.
We would prefer that.
Yes.
Item number four, Tanya.
Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, representing TS Morris Youth Intervention Organization. Public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at 2041 McGowan Street in a R60D zoning district.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Hughes with Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors. We are presenting the development plan for the TS Morrison Youth Intervention Organization.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience?
I do have a question. That, that existing structure out there, is that restrooms?
Well, it's actually, uh, an office and restrooms and a storage, uh, building, not building, storage room.
The existing one?
The existing one, yes. They're using the, uh, parking lot of the existing building and putting another building to the west of that, without any additional water or, or sewer connections.
To the west or to the east? It don't matter.
Yeah, it's to the west.
Anything further? A public hearing's been held, thank you.
Number five, Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, representing Jim Trucking. Public hearing for a development plan for a new building and commercial truck parking lot to be located at 828 Lagoon Commercial Boulevard in M1 District.
Steve Hughes with Jeffco Engineers and Surveyors, presenting the development plan for Jim Trucking.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? A public hearing's been held, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Wait a minute.
Five trucks?
If you, uh, I've got a copy up here if you'd like to...
Did you speak into the mic?
Glibia City Council District Two. So I went by there today. So where's your, where's that big crane?
The drain ditch is actually on this side.
So this is for the...
Come in central part of the line, it's a bypass lane, come in, pull in, pull in, pull in.
So where's your building?
Uh, the small storage room.
So it's just your, and you're just, your trucks, five trucks?
Yes.
You've got an extra couple of them. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Number six, PEC, representing Rockland Homes. A public hearing for a development plan for a new townhouse community to be located at 6570 Atlanta Highway in a R20T district.
Hey, everyone, my name is Caleb Pearson with Planners and Engineers Collaborative. I'm the civil engineering project manager for our proposed development off of Atlanta Highway. Representing Rockland Homes, as Tanya said, our roughly 20-acre project is proposing 185 townhomes with two proposed entrances off of Brown Springs and Ashton Road. We're utilizing the onsite existing stormwater management facilities, and alongside our townhomes, we're proposing a sizable amenity area to the west of the project with a clubhouse, pool, and pickleball courts. Additionally onsite, we have, uh, we're meeting the, the 20% open space across the site and are providing 33 guest parking spaces.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Will you use HOAs?
I'm sorry?
I said, will this include HO- will, will you have HOAs?
I assume so, yes, sir. I can confirm that with our, with our owner, Rockland, but I believe that is the intention.
Okay, could you check into that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reed, I believe that was actually part of the ordinance when it was rezoned to have a HOA for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Hello, my name is Kale Ransom, I live on 6403 Ashton Court. I'm a licensed attorney, have a, a master's degree in criminal justice, I have a juris doctorate, I'm working towards a PhD in criminal justice right now, with a simultaneous to a nursing degree. That said, um, my concerns are obviously crime. Um, that's, and I know money fixes everything, but, you know, there's a few solutions that I would ask the developers to maybe consider, which would be adequate lighting along Ashton Court, or, yeah, Ashton Circle on their portion of the property. I would also consi- uh, ask them to consider the traffic control coming into Ashton Circle. I was unfortunately not here for the last hearing, but, you know, those are my main concerns, or just making sure we have adequate basic crime prevention, which would be lighting and traffic control.
Ashton Circle's not part of this development.
It's not, we're adjacent to it.
I know, but how are they gonna put lighting on Ashton Circle?
What's that? Um, well, if the planning commission is, uh, in, asking for this, I would just ask if they, on their portion of the property that joins Ashton Circle, right along, if you look at the map, it's going to be right up on Ashton Circle, I would, I would ask that they would put lighting along that, that border if possible. Because the thing is, Ed, if you're familiar with crime theory, I, I, you know, it's, it's going to cause some social disorganization in the community, and anytime you get social disorganization, you have a resulting spike in crime rate. Um, that's just the theory that's currently on the table. Um, but that said, I would just ask that we try to balance that off a little bit with, with adequate lighting, and also, if there's going to be an entrance on Ashton Circle, I would ask that they consider the traffic control there to make sure we have adequate traffic control, maybe a stop sign or a stop light, I don't know, I don't really want a stop light there, because that would be a pain, but just make sure we don't have a whole backlog of traffic on Ashton Circle. Also, I would, you know, the, the lighting along the, the Ashton Circle border would ensure a reduction in crime.
Maybe they could do it on Ashton Road, on their side of Ashton Road.
Yes.
Not Circle.
Not the, no, no, not the whole circle, just their portion of the border. You're correct.
If I remember correctly, uh, didn't we say something about a barrier on that side of the street or something? If I remember correctly?
Yes, we did, we requested a buffer of trees, yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright.
That's correct, yes, sir. On the, on the western side, we have a, I believe it's like 90 feet, uh, buffer off of Ashton, uh, that is intended to be used for landscaping with a 25-foot dedicated landscape buffer.
Yeah.
Public hearing's been held, thank you.
Number seven, PEC, representing Rockland Homes, requesting final approval of Magnolia Estates located, plat one, located on the east side of Ashton Road, west side of Brown Spring Road, in a R20T district.
Yep, again, Caleb Pearson, Planners and Engineers Collaborative, the civil engineer representing Rockland, if there are any questions regarding the plat.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Number eight, Pilgrin and Bostic Engineering, representing Site Pros. Public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at 10290 Highway 80 East in a M1 District.
Uh, my name's Chris Bostick, I'm with Pilgrin and Bostic Engineering, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the planning commission?
Chris, what impact, if any, are you gonna have, because you're having to go through Montgomery, are you having to go through Pike Road also?
Uh, we spoke to Pike Road, and since the majority of the development is on our side, they asked only that we give them a courtesy copy. There's a small shed that's in the back that's in the Pike Road PJs, but they're not concerned about going through there, since the majority of the overall is on our Montgomery side.
Fair enough.
Any questions from the audience? Public hearing's been held, thanks, Chris.
Next item, Pilgrin and Bostic Engineering, representing Georgiana Convenience. Public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at 3851 Interstate Court in a B2 district.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Um, Chris, this, if, and I'm trying to remember back to, to I think, but didn't we get this whole, both of the lots on that corner rezoned to, uh, business?
The lot on the north side, we rezoned to business, and then the two lots were combined.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But, but, but this still has a carve-out for a B2 on the other corner, to, that's, that's, um...
Oh, the, the southeast corner is Aldott property.
I'm sorry?
Is Aldott.
Aldott.
Yes, sir. Perry Hill changes over to Aldott right there.
Okay, so, so you're just gonna take the old house that's on the corner and Jerry's Beasley's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to make sure of.
Anything from the audience? Public hearing's been held, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Gilwood Mills K. Wood, representing Mullinax Automotive, Hyundai Montgomery. Public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located on the northwest corner of Quamica Road and Woods Crossing in a B2 district.
Good evening. Cedric Campbell with Gilwood Mills and K. Wood here, presenting the development plan for Mullinax Automotive. I ask any questions that any commission members may have.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Cedric, you've got better eyes than I do. I couldn't read this.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't. No matter what I did, I even had my magnifying glass out, so since it's you, I know it's gonna be done right, but at the end of the day, it's awful when you can't read what's- what's, and that's not your bit. You don't put them in here.
Well, we'll make sure that you get a, well, we usually give a good copy to city staff, and I don't know what happened on that one. It may have been the production of it. Maybe someone-
Well, it's a big, it's a big plat, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Staff may be able to tell you, but usually we send a PDF, so the quality can be zoomed in and you can see what's going on.
That's not my only comment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What car dealer is that?
Hyundai Genesis.
Any questions from the audience? Public hearings been held. Thank you.
Next item, Gilwood Mills K. Wood, representing Retirement Systems of Alabama. Requesting final approval of ABC Warehouse, Flat One, on the north side of Congressman W.L. Dickinson Drive in a B2, B3, M-1, and Ag-1 zoning district.
Cedric Campbell with Gilwood Mills and K. Wood, here on behalf of the Retirement Systems of Alabama, asking for a final plat approval for this project on Congressman Dickerson Drive. I ask any questions that the commission may have.
I got one with y'all. You know, we've got one that supposedly is not in compliance, okay? And the city's asking for it to be done, if I'm understanding what's being said.
What's not in compliance?
Well, oh, if not in compliance, why is the city trying to use it? So that's what my question was.
I don't, I'm not certain.
For this one, Mr. Hardrick, or another one?
It, no, it was this one.
Number 11?
Number 11. So it is in compliance.
Yeah, it says this plat is in compliance.
So we got a whiskey house going there, right?
Yeah, a warehouse.
All right, all right.
Any questions from the audience?
If Bronner's gonna do it, it's gonna be done right.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item, Gilwood Mills K. Wood, representing the City of Montgomery. Requesting final approval of Madison Avenue Gateway, Flat One, on the south side of Madison Avenue between North Jackson and North Hilliard Streets in a T5 district.
Cedric Campbell with Gilwood Mills and K. Wood, here requesting final plat approval. Answering any questions that the commission may have.
This is the one that wasn't within. It wasn't in-
That's correct, but the CRC.
I was one step ahead. I guess I read.
I got you. But the CRC approved a variant, a warrant for it.
Okay. Did you do that? You didn't vote on that.
CRC did it.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience?
Is it still gonna be parking there?
That's the plan, yes, sir.
In the near future, anyway.
Well, I don't know how near, but yes, sir, that's the plan.
Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item, Gilwood Mills and K. Wood, representing Grady Hicks. Requesting final approval of Millard Fuller Drive Extension Street Dedication at the northernmost end of Millard Fuller Drive in a B2 district.
Cedric Campbell with Gilwood Mills and K. Wood, here requesting final plat approval. On behalf of Mr. Hicks and the City of Montgomery, the City of Montgomery has been working with Mr. Hicks to for this extension of Millard Fuller to give emergency management another access point into the residential neighborhoods that are off Algonquin Parkway.
Cedric, is the city responsible for that road once, if that's done?
That is my understanding. Ms. Beer may be able to speak to it a little better, but that's my understanding. They have worked out if Mr. Hicks will grant them the right of way, the city is going to have the road itself.
All right, but this has been kind of the hang-up in part of this for the last several years.
Yes.
So, okay, so who can answer whether it's the city?
Patrick, lady?
Patrick Dunson can answer, city engineer.
Yeah, Patrick. That one's working.
That one's working. Yeah, what was the question?
We, Mr. Hicks has been before us several times in the last several years, and there's always been some sort of complications. And now, what I'm understanding is the road's gonna be extended to the Parkway, to the Parkway. And my question was, is the city gonna maintain that road across the foot end?
Yes, the city, the road will be built to city standards, and the dedication of the road is, and the right of way is what kind of why we're here today. It's the first step, so we will own the property to be able to build the street on. We'll build it to city standards, and to end the day, we'll maintain it from now on.
Okay, so the city's building it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Very good.
Any further questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I'm just curious why that existing structure on this plat is not shown.
Say that again, Mr. Reed.
That existing structure there.
This is strictly to dedicate the street, so it's not gonna show structures.
Anything from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ma'am?
She has a comment. Comment. I think she has a comment. Got a comment.
You come to the microphone, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Greta Sales. I live at 709 Millard Fuller Drive. I have a few questions about this going on because I've been before the city council for years. We've been trying to get the street paved, being a resident in New Hope Village, a homeowner, and we were back and forth with the city, trying to decide. This is when Mayor Tar Strang was in office. So when we found out the property was sold, I got a statement talking, that was saying that that property should not be sold for profit, or if it was to be sold, it should be for educational or recreational purposes. And this is before, right at the time when Mr. Grady Hicks purchased the property. The city council asked us to meet with Mr. Hicks to discuss, like, because he was trying to rezone the property. I'm just now finding out that the property's been rezoned. Haven't had any information about it, you know, up until then. I presented information to the city council. I don't know if anyone took a look at any of it or not. And then I had some issues, and I've been asking questions, but not seeming to get any answers for that property. There, we found out that there was water underground. So if there's water underground, that street being paved, is that gonna pose a problem? And that property was dedicated, was dedicated to Habitat for Humanity. And we were told that we could use that property to have our meetings where that construction warehouse is. And we could probably turn it into like a little clubhouse, and they were gonna put playground equipment and stuff like that around that area so that our kids can have somewhere to go and play. This has been something going on. I've been in my house since 1999. And then now I'm hearing stuff about the areas rezoned, and they're not even talking about anything for the structure on the property. So I just have questions and issues about that.
Well, this is, this is only for the street to be paved to go through it. That's all this is about. Just the street.
Okay, I understand that. Mr. Hicks bought the property illegally, and then Mr. Hicks has sold the property about two or three times since then. So my thing is, what is this gonna cause for homeowners? I understand you all paved the street, and we would love to have the street paved because it's been dangerous for us traveling through the other community with gunshots and things like that happening, or the train being on the track and not being able to get, you know, good passages, clearance and stuff in and out. So I don't have a problem with the street being paved. My problem, issue, is how is that property sold like that when it was not supposed to been so?
Now, that's the issue that we dealt with, and I've been sitting here well over six years. We even had the director or the president or whatever from Habitat for Humanity. That's something that we got no control over. I mean, that was some issue that, and matter of fact, we even had the community to meet with that guy. He came to one of our meetings.
I was one of the ones that met with him, but we haven't met since.
We got nothing to do with that, and that property hasn't been rezoned because we didn't approve Mr. Hicks when he came.
So it's not rezoned for commercial?
It still should be zoned residential property.
It's still rezoned residential?
That's what it's supposed to be.
No, sir. This was rezoned a couple of years ago to commercial. Y'all approved it, and city council approved it.
Wow.
And it went through all the proper processes.
But tonight, we're only dealing with the street.
Strictly the street.
We're only dealing with the street tonight.
Okay.
Purely the street.
Thank you. Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, Xavier Harris, representing Woodley Memorial Garden and Woodley Cremations. Request to rezone one lot located on the west side of Woodley Road, known as 3086 Woodley Road, from an O-1 office district to a M-1 light in the industry district.
Good afternoon. My name is Xavier Harris. I'm assistant director of the City of Montgomery Maintenance and Building Department. Also a member of Woodley Memorial Gardens, and we're planning on doing Woodley cremations at our 3086 location. Campbell, for the panel here at the planning commission, to ask for the rezoning, to allow us to do cremations. I understand that currently the ordinance doesn't, you know, it's not zoned, and I'm trying to see if I can get reconsideration of that. And, you know, I can, I have the information within the packet that we're gonna pass out to you guys that explains everything, you know, in reference to the cremation process, the machines. It meets all EPA standards. We have support from the local funeral homes, as well as the Board of Funeral Directors. And that's pretty much about it at this point. I take on any questions you may have.
Do y'all have another location other than-
We have a cemetery, the actual cemetery, 4410 Woodley Road, correct? Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, but you don't have another-
Excuse me?
You don't have another crematory?
No, no, I don't. No, no, I don't. There are others that are in Montgomery that are, you know, spread, you know, throughout the neighborhoods and different areas or whatnot. Yes, sir.
All right, sir.
We understand that, we understand that there's, that there's some stuff that, in your packet, that we probably won't understand after reading it.
Yes, sir.
But ordinance 3397 strictly prohibits that.
Yes, sir.
How do we get past that?
And that ordinance was established in 1995, I believe it was.
But still enforced?
Yes, sir, it is. But however, due to that, at the moment, due to technology, it really doesn't apply to today's standards of 2024 in regards to cremation machines. For its emissions, for its burn-off, things of that nature. Burger King put out more pollutants than what a cremation machine puts out.
Yeah, but we're not talking about Burger King. The whole thing, the whole thing is, is that, yeah, the the ordinance might be outdated. Okay, fine, not outdated. That's almost 30 years ago. But it's still enforced. I mean, 45 miles an hour is outdated in certain highways, but it's still enforced.
Yes, sir.
So how do we get past that?
Yes, sir. I'm just asking for reconsideration. That's why I'm coming before you.
Reconsider, but we didn't make the ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is right across the street from where the county has proposed a new community center, too. Right across the street.
Uh, there's a-
They're gonna be built before long.
Okay, which location?
Right ahead of Elsbury.
Okay. Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, a new community center. But even with the modern technology, there's still regulations that the state is gonna require you to have for environmental, for environmental reasoning, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And you'll be inspected every so often for that.
Yes, yes, sir.
But we can't get past you asking us to do something that's prohibited. We can't get past that. I, well, let me rephrase that. I can't.
Okay.
Is there anything further from the planning commission? Anything from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to disapprove for the reason of the spot zoning, number one. And number two, it provides special treatment for a single property owner because all the other, the other areas around there is just, is not for that. And ordinance 33, 3397 prohibits.
Do we-
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
unanimous. Sorry.
Thank you.
That's all we got.
Meeting's adjourned.